Ms. Rye, please put your phone on.
Start.
Not, okay. Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 4:04 PM on this 25th day of August 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's executive orders, amended by the Virginia General Assembly and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vb schools dot com, broadcast on VB TV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Madam Clerk, I'm not going to ask you to take the roll, attendance, and announce Board members present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in chambers, we have Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Felton, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Rye, Mr. Edwards, and Ms. Holtz. Via Zoom, we have Ms. Owens.
Okay, and I will add that Mrs. Weems is not present. Okay, thank you. So I know we're all anxious to get into our agenda. As far as admin matters, I will open it up for any colleagues who have anything to share at this time. Okay, then I will just mention, because it was representing all of you yesterday, was teacher orient, new teacher orientation began, and we had a Zoom presentation with, including Dr. Spence and myself, and we had a lovely young lady from Bayside High School who really was the initial speaker. So it was a really nice welcome for the 350 teachers who were joining in via Zoom. And I did give a quick snapshot on our board composition, and of course, what our role was in supporting them. So with that, we will get to our update on the reopening of schools, updates, plural, with multiple presenters, starting with Dr. Bergen, our Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Dr. Spence, members of our board, and in particular, good afternoon to all of our students and our parents and staff who are watching this presentation from a remote location. My name is Mark Bergen, I'm the Chief of Staff for the School Division, and this afternoon, I, along with other members of our senior staff, will be providing a series of updates for the Board and the community on our planning efforts for the new school year. I'll begin this presentation, much like I have the last several, with first a review of the current health metrics, and then going to summarize for the Board the final results of the student registration process before turning the presentation over to Dr. Robertson, who is going to be providing you the current status of where we are with scheduling teachers and students. He'll then be followed by Mr. Freeman, who is going to provide an update on the operational and facility planning efforts, and then by Dr. Rogers, who will review for you the professional learning plan that went into effect this week, as you mentioned, with Talkly for new teachers, and continuing next week for all teachers. And then, we are inviting Mr. Din from behind the Zoom curtain to come join you at the podium, and he's going to review with you some of the network and instructional technology enhancements that have occurred over the summer, and will be occurring within the next several weeks and months. I'll then come back to the podium to conclude the presentation with a brief reminder about the next VB Safe Together session this Thursday, and we will spend the bulk of our time answering your questions. So I suspect this view is looking very familiar to you after the several, last several School Board workshops. This is a screenshot taken this morning from the Virginia Department of Health website for today, indicating the percent positivity for the Eastern Region, and I'll summarize for you what's happened over the last month. The graph is over the last five months. So first, acclimate yourself to the chart. The green line, the horizontal green line marks the threshold for percent positivity, everything at 5% or below. The red line marks percent positivity for everything at 10% or above, and in between, of course, is the yellow zone, everything between 5 and 10% for positivity. Over the last month, the seven-day rolling average has declined from a high, as indicated on the screen, of 12.2% on July 18, and as of this morning is at 8.4%, which is down from 9.7 when we were last together two weeks ago. So at 8.4%, we are solidly in yellow metrics for percent positivity. This is a companion slide from the Virginia Department of Health website from today, and indicates the number of new cases for COVID-19 in the Eastern Region on a daily basis. So again, the green line at the bottom marks the threshold for new cases at 26 or fewer on a seven-day rolling average, and the red line indicates number of new cases at 265 or more, with yellow falling in between everything above 26 and below 265. As indicated on the golden rod line, since reaching a high of 483 cases at the end of July on the 25th, the number of new cases as of today stands at 218.4 in the yellow zone, which is down from 350 cases since our last meeting two weeks ago. Now I'll switch to the high-level review of the student verification process for registration. So this pie chart represents the work of our principals, counselors, and other school staff over the last several weeks and months in reaching the vast majority of our families for a final completion rate of 92%. When we were last together on August 11, I shared with you that we had an unverified rate of 30%, but that now stands at 8%. So when you subtract the 8% out of what was 30, we were able to reach another one-fifth of our families, or 22% of our families, and it turns out that their choices were split right down the middle, with half of them choosing for face-to-face and half of them choosing for virtual. So when we, when we add together the, what was 42% for face-to-face, and we add the additional families we were able to reach, we're now at 53% for in-person instruction or face-to-face, as indicated on the screen. And in terms of preference for Option 2 or virtual assignment, it has increased from 28% to 39%. I want to talk a little bit about that gray slice at 8%. As we shared with you at the last Board meeting, it was our intent, and we have done so, to move those 8% of families and students from unverified into face-to-face. So when we combine the 8% in with the 52% for face-to-face, our final results would be 61% of our students being scheduled for face-to-face instruction when safe to do so, and 39% of our students for virtual. That was a high-level summary, but I want to go, what I have not done with you before, which is go into a little more detail. So I sent the Board an email several days ago that included the results of all of the schools, if you had a chance to review that. If you didn't, I'm just going to summarize for you just the top six and the bottom six by percentage of families who indicated a preference for Option 1. So the results for the elementary schools are the two columns to the far left, the high schools are the two columns to the far right, and the two columns down the middle, of course, would be for the middle schools. The green rows across the top are the top six schools by percentage for Option 1, in-person instruction, and the blue rows across the bottom are for the six schools with the lowest percentage for Option 1. I want to point out to you the large variance in range that exists. For elementary schools, if you start at the bottom left-hand corner and read up, you'll see that the range is as low as 36.9% of the children in that building returning for in-person instruction, to a high of 80.6 for children in other buildings. Matter of fact, you'll see the top six are in a range of 77 to 80%. The variance for the middle schools is similar, starting with a low at the bottom of 39% all the way up to a high of 78.8%, and for the high schools, starting in the bottom right-hand corner, school number 13 high school, with just shy of 50% of the students coming back for face-to-face instruction, up to a high of 79% for the top school for in-person instruction. These variances have created some additional challenges for us in select schools for social distancing of students, which Mr. Freeman will be addressing shortly, and they have exacerbated the already complex challenges for scheduling students with teachers, which Mr. Robertson, Dr. Robertson, will share with you. And so on that note, I'd like to introduce Dr. Robertson.
Thank you, and welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bergen, and good afternoon. As you know, the Department of School Leadership released student daily schedules on Thursday last week. As noted in the release, the schedule was driven by several factors, with the impact of transportation needs, to have additional time between runs to clean and disinfect buses, and have reduced ridership to support health mitigation strategies being the most significant. For all stakeholders, it was evident in the release of these schedules that learning, as promised, would be more robust than what was in place during the ELP. Currently, we are nearing the end of our student and staff scheduling or assignment process. School staff have worked tirelessly over the past week to complete a process, as I noted two weeks ago, in less than 10 days that normally takes three to four months. Obviously, there has been great anxiety and pressure placed on this task, as teachers, students, and families want to know their own personal schedules as soon as possible. Please know that when this process concluded, as I note on the next slide, we will be only one week behind the normal time period when we have released schedules in the past. Earlier this summer, the School Division decided to offer families a remote learning-only and an in-person option to begin 2020, 2021. The remote option was referred to as the Virtual Learning Center, or VLC. In early planning, the VLC leadership team decided to separate all students who chose remote, and those staff that preferred to teach remotely, into a centrally-led Virtual Learning Center. As family selections and staff preferences came in, it became obvious that with over 40% of families representing almost 30,000 students compared to roughly 20% of teachers would result in a mismatch that could not be overcome. Therefore, we adjusted our plan for the Virtual Learning Center by starting at the school level first. In this way, we felt we could keep as many students and teachers from a single school together to the greatest extent possible and serve them in the home-based Virtual Learning Center. The remaining students and teachers would then move into the central-based Virtual Learning Center, which would consist of mixed classrooms with students from more than one school, similar to what you would see in summer school, to be taught by a teacher from another school. This has proven to be a much better and achievable solution. I will admit that families were not informed of this pivot in planning, which has resulted in some unneeded confusion, and for that, I take full responsibility. Finally, I do want to take a moment to briefly share two of the most significant challenges that our schedulers are facing for the first time ever. In fact, there is no book or manual on this process we are faced with, so we have to create and problem-solve at the same time this enormous task. The first challenge I want to discuss is the difficulty of matching family choice for Option 1 and Option 2 set alongside teacher preference for Option 1 or Option 2. We have worked with Employee Relations to provide schools with a staff priority list to do, the list to do everything we possibly can to honor staff preferences, and in the end, I think we will be very successful in this approach. Yet I am also certain we will have a few cases where a staff member noted a preference for Option 2, but didn't meet the criteria to place them at risk, and therefore, based on student and building needs, were placed in Option 1. Please know when this occurs, there will have been a conversation between an administrator, the staff member, and if necessary, Employee Relations. The second challenge I want to briefly discuss is how student course scheduling, or student course selections vary widely at the secondary level and adds to the complexity. For example, in the four-by-four, let's say a ninth-grade student is taking English, Social Studies, Health and PE, Health and PE in an elective course. Seems pretty straightforward. But depending on course selection, you could have many variations of this sequence. For example, if we keep Health and PE the same, and just look at the other three subject areas, student A could have English 9, World History 1, and Art. Student B could have Honors English 9, World History 1, and Spanish. Student C could have Honors English 9, AP Euro, and French. Student D is a student with disabilities, and could have English 9, World History 1, and a resource. It is this level of complexity that then requires a matching of staff to meet each of these student needs. Now multiply this by hundreds, and you get to see the full picture of how difficult this process is under normal circumstances. On Thursday, we will be releasing to all teachers their teaching assignments and schedules. We recognize, as I shared earlier, that this is one week later than normal, and in more cases than usual, may result in a change to what a teacher thought they would be teaching this year from what was shared with them at the end of last year. This is due solely to serving students in two settings, and having teachers with documented health conditions needing to be placed in Option 2. In each case where a teacher's schedule is different from what they thought they would be teaching, know a conversation has or will occur between the administrator and the teacher to explain why, the why behind the change. Of note, each year, we welcome over 500 new teachers, many of whom have never taught before, and they always learn of their schedule on the first day of in-service week, and on day one, they are ready to go. I trust our veteran teachers will be ready to go as well. On Friday, elementary schools will be mailing students' schedules home. Hopefully, the U.S. Postal Office Service will deliver these mailings in a timely manner. Parents of elementary children should contact their homeschool on Wednesday next week if they haven't received their child's schedule in the mail. On Friday, secondary schools will complete their student scheduling process. On Monday, August 31, secondary schools would load student schedules into Parent View and Student View for those families and students who have set up these applications to view their schedules. For families that have not done so yet, or prefer to receive schedules in another manner, please contact your child's homeschool this week. Over the coming weeks, schools will continue to accept, process, and place students in the classes. We will give families, we will give the families of new enrollees the choice of Option 1 or Option 2, but schools may not be able to honor all of these requests. For example, if a school has filled all available seats in a requested Option 1 classroom, the school cannot add another student to that class since it's at capacity. In this case, the family's choice will be noted, and they will be scheduled into an Option 2 class. If a seat comes open in the in-person class, they can then be moved to the in-person setting. As of today, schools are drawing closer to having all teacher vacancies filled. If a school has a vacancy at the beginning of the year, they will use a preferred or site-based substitute until such time as a teacher can be hired, and this is no different than any other year. Finally, the Department of School Leadership is planning to create a Tuesday through Thursday evening online tutoring center as a means to acknowledge the need to provide more support to students and families with school assignments, and I will hope to have more information for you when we meet again in two weeks. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer.
May I interrupt a moment just to ask my colleagues, would they prefer to ask questions as this information is presented, or wait till all the presentations? Proceed like we did before? Okay, thank you, Dr. Robertson.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. So today, I'm going to focus on our facilities preparations. So this is an example of signage that you'll expect to see in our buildings. You can see the screening tool. Our screening tool is in the process of being updated, as we discussed it a couple of School Board meetings ago. We are updating that language in accordance with current guidance. There are signs reinforcing masks, signs reinforcing distancing, and there are signs reinforcing hand washing and the use of hand sanitizer. All signage will be installed by the 31st of August, with the exception of the one-way signage, which will be installed by the 18th of September, the Friday before the earliest opportunity for face-to-face instruction. All right, here are examples of placement of signage in schools. As you approach the building on the left, mask signage at the entryway, and on the right, you can see distancing placards as you approach the buzzer system, and the screening tool is also up there next to the buzzer system as well. During arrival and dismissal, as you can imagine, it's a little bit different flow, and we're encouraging schools to prop their doors open with appropriate monitors in place to support distancing and minimizing the touching of surfaces during those times. Once in the building, you'll see plexiglass barriers in the main office and at the security desk with distancing placards on the floor. And this is an example of what a hallway might look like with one-way signage. Schools are encouraged to plan for one-way halls, or when needed, to clearly define traffic flow on either side of the hall. Moving into the classroom, here's an example of maintaining three feet of distancing with desks. We have delivered a large amount of blue tape to schools so that teachers and staff can mark their classrooms appropriately, and every classroom will also receive a roughly three-by-three plexiglass barrier, and those will be in place by September 18. All right, let's look at an example of flexible seating. We have about four weeks until the earliest opportunity for face-to-face instruction begins. We've got a little bit of work ahead of us as it relates to flexible seating in elementary school classrooms. We're focused on providing our educators with available and appropriate resources to support instruction, and we now have input from families to define the number of students selecting Option 1. For those elementary schools that have a high percentage of students choosing Option 1, we'll work with DOSL and schools to make appropriate adjustments. Those adjustments may include moving desks within schools or between schools to specifically prioritize the areas. In the picture on the left, three feet of distancing can be maintained even when students are leading in to do their work. I was there, I put a yardstick on the table, there's three feet there. With that being said, we are exploring with DOSL the potential of adding physical barriers. For example, and this is an example only, there are trifolds that are easily used that can be put up potentially at that middle seat that you see on the left, that helps add a further measure of safety in examples like this. So those are a couple of things that we continue to explore for how we can support flexible seating, and we will provide you a full update at the next School Board meeting. The last thing that I want to share is that we have received all of our orders of hand sanitizer and disinfectant for every classroom, and we'll have bottles in each of our classrooms by the end of this week. And we expect to receive our final order of foam-it machines by September 8, which means that every one of our schools will have a foam-it machine and the ability to rapidly disinfect our schools. I will now turn it over to Dr. Kip Rogers to discuss teaching and learning progress.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. As indicated in the VB CPS instructional plan, designated groups of students with disabilities may begin in-person instruction when the identified health metrics for the Eastern Region are in a combination of the red and yellow zones for percent positivity and cases by date. So therefore, students with disabilities under IDEA who require intensive supports may return earlier than other student groups. We will begin with students' serve and specialized programs such as adapted academic foundations and functional academic foundations, early childhood special education, and supportive therapeutic education program. This also includes student-served and various programs within our CSET programs. Now the approximate number of students in each program, we have about 600 students in our AAF and FAF classes, about 350 in our ECSE classes, and that number certainly could change, and it's based on the number of students that are found eligible within our preschool assessment center, and those who require special education services in our ECSE settings. We have about 40 students in our STEM program, and about 400 students are served within the CSET program. We have about, well, all of our high schools have at least one of these programs. 12 of the 15 middle schools have at least one program, and then 36 of our 55 elementary schools have at least one of those programs, for a total of 60 of our school buildings have at least one of those programs. And as Mr. Freeman just shared, we are working towards a start date of about September 22 for students being served in those identified programs whose parents have selected Option 1 face-to-face learning, and we will certainly work with those parents and families with completion of IEPs, not only for those students, but certainly for all students with disabilities. And next, I'd like to direct your attention to our overview of our professional learning plan for teaching remotely. It's absolutely started back in March. We are fortunate in that we do have, every one of our schools has at least one full-time instructional technology specialist to support the implementation of instructional technology in our buildings, and our professional learning journey to prepare our teachers for teaching virtually certainly began last March and has spanned a scope of three phases. Phase 1 took place this past spring and consisted of professional learning opportunities that were designed and aligned to support the continuity of learning plan again in March, and the emergency learning plan that started in April. Phase 2, which is at the tail end of Phase 2 right now, took place this summer and has been focused on our summer learning opportunities for students and preparing our teachers to be successful this school year. And then Phase 3, which is primarily in the fall and beyond, focuses on successful opening of school, and specifically during the first month of school, and ensuring that all of our staff will have a year of success. So I want to direct your attention to one of the resources that we have here. During Phase 1, the Instruction Technology Coordinators, or ITCs, they developed a pre-K through 12 continuity of learning website, which included links for the many virtual teaching and learning resources that were available to teachers, and helpful tutorials, as well as videos that they could use to support effective virtual instruction. And this website that you see before you, or the screenshot of it, is available now as it offers a wide range of learning opportunities that are still relevant to our teachers. So as you can see at the top, there are links to resources that were provided as part of ongoing job embedded professional learning, such as screen recording, best practices for teaching in a virtual environment, and using live web conferencing tools such as Google Meet, Zoom, and School G's big blue button. And as part of the emergency learning plan, each Monday was dedicated to providing professional learning opportunities to support student learning. Now toward the end of the school year, this is a slide from the end of the school year, but this represents in April, our ITCs trained every building's instructional technology specialists on the best platforms for connecting with students while teaching remotely. And in addition, our ITCs developed this resource here that was released weekly after training was taking place, after training took place on Mondays. It's a tip sheet that's called It's a tip sheet that's called Harnessing the Power of Technology and Innovation. And it included a wide variety of helpful virtual teaching strategies for social-emotional learning, Schoology features, and effective technology integration and tool methods. The tip sheet in front of you is a screenshot from June 8th. And again, they submitted this weekly after the trainings took place on Monday. And it gives a great snapshot of what took place at the end of the school year. So on the left where there's an arrow pointed to Flipgrid. Flipgrid is a resource that our schools use to record summaries of thinking and summaries of ideas. And there's some wonderful examples of teachers and ITSs talking about all the wonderful professional development that they had over the course of the spring on those Mondays. And I encourage you, if you'd like to see some, I'd be happy to email them to you. On the bottom right, it points to CSOW, which at the end of the year, our schools were directing our teachers to take advantage of the resource that we'll share a little bit more about with that in a minute. But that's a perfect example of the great professional learning that took place all throughout the course of last spring and certainly into the summer. Phase two, over the summer, we had over 400 teachers who taught virtually this summer, either in our elementary programs or our middle or high school programs. 200 elementary teachers and 220 middle school or high school teachers. And what we learned from those teachers' experiences teaching virtually was invaluable. And the feedback that we received from them helped to inform our professional learning design efforts. Also for phase two, the ITCs created a two-part essential or mandatory course for all of our instructional staff called Strategic Moves for Virtual Learning. This course is made up of six strategic areas that have been identified as key to successful virtual teaching. Part one consists of three areas: getting ready for the school year, social-emotional learning and wellness, digital tools. Our staff are expected to have part one completed by September 1.
Part one of this course.
Part one of the course consists of three areas. Again, getting ready, social-emotional learning and well-being, as well as digital tools. Nearly 1,200 educators participated in the Digital Learning Summit last week. We had 10 sessions that had over 200 participants in each session. And there was an average of 130 participants in each session. And I do want to point out, the first time that that Strategic Moves course was offered, the very first session had about 300 teachers attending. Part two of the Strategic Moves course consists of strategies for engaging students in the virtual space, providing quality feedback and grading strategies. And the last one is probably my favorite because that's an opportunity for teachers to share ideas and resources and tips and tricks on how to successfully teach in the virtual space. And of course, continued professional learning is being planned for phase three. And some of the items that we will be sharing with our staff include strategies and best practices for virtual learning, maximizing learning in a virtual environment, of course, and then utilization of the virtual, of the four-by-four schedule, culturally responsive practices, and ongoing conversations about providing students and families with quality feedback as well as grading. Now, much of the success of teaching and learning virtually is highly dependent not only upon the preparedness of our staff, but also on the resources that we have available to not only our students, our staff, and our teachers. Dr. Sharon Schubridge is our new Director of Instructional Technology. And I'd like her to share some of the great instructional technology resources and training that we're providing for our staff, students, and families. Dr. Schubridge.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Good evening, Chairwoman Rye and Vice Chair Melnick and board members and Dr. Spence. My name is Sharon Schubridge, and I am the Director of Instructional Technology. I appreciate the opportunity tonight just to talk about some of the new resources that we have for teachers this year. A lot of them are based on feedback from community, from parents, from teachers in the spring. And so we moved into action to put some things in place to support our teachers. So this is the Instructional Technology Professional page. So earlier, Dr. Rogers had shared the Continuity of Learning website. We felt like we were no longer in the continuity of learning. We're now in a new school year, and so we've updated the website. However, all of the resources and materials are still there. So all of the resources to the applications that we've provided for teachers that include training videos and tutorials are part of that, as well as a Virtual Learning 101, which has tips about Schoology, accessing and creating a consistent Schoology course, K-12. All of those components are now inside of VBCPS Instructional Technology. I also wanted to just share that Schoology is our learning management system and will continue to be so. What we have done this year is, again, based on feedback, is we have asked all teachers to create their course in the same manner. So there is a teacher picture, the teacher name. That way, no matter what grade level a parent is looking at, they're looking in the same folders. They can find the same information. So all elementary students will have a welcome folder. All students, grades 6 through 12, will have a course information folder. So that way, they can find that immediate information. So this is just an example of what we had in the spring. So we had parent information read first. We feel like that's important, something that the parents know where to go to. And then designated weeks. And again, we were talking to teachers about consistency within buildings so that parents have an easier time finding students' work. This is an example of a math course. So you can see where in the spring they had broken out each week and named it. And then inside, you can see all of the activities that the students were going to be assigned to do. And again, we're trying to keep that consistent K-12 for ease of parents, but also for ease of students, so they know where to access their materials. This year, in addition to Schoology, we have invested in CSOW. CSOW creates a learning loop that unites students, teachers, and families. There's a lot of opportunities for students to create, then critically communicate, practice citizenship. There's a built-in blog. And with CSOW for schools, we have a dynamic dashboard to assist us in understanding student, teacher, and family interactions. And that became evident in the spring. We were looking for how are our students engaging with their learning? How are they engaging with their teachers? So in the bottom right of this picture, you can see this is one week at Kingston Elementary School. There were 2,072 new items posted to the CSOW account at that school. 1,600 likes, 914 parent views. So within that one week of school, we saw that we had 914 parent interactions with student work. There's a need for consistent, regular communication. Students love the creativity, choice, and visible thinking they can demonstrate. Teachers love the ability to reflect, the student agency and the feedback that they can provide. Families now feel connected. And this is an example of the CSOW Family App that makes it very easy for parents to engage. Parents can immediately like their child's work. And as soon as the parent likes it, it shows up at school. The student can see the heart on their work. A parent can write a comment that immediately is there for their student. Parents can even record a voice comment back. So it allows for the student to get immediate feedback from their parent. I'm pretty excited. This application we have purchased for grades K through 2. It is not a replacement for Schoology, but we're hoping it will be a supplement and a complement to how the teachers are using Schoology. In addition, this year, we have purchased Securely Classroom. Securely Classroom is a classroom monitoring and student communication tool. And as we start in the remote environment, this is going to be beneficial for classroom teachers. So if you notice in the bottom-left corner, I know it's hard to see, but that's an example of a teacher's dashboard, and those are six student devices. So any student on a division Chromebook, the teacher can see what the student has open. So as you can see in this example, the picture in the circle is a student on Minecraft and not where they're supposed to be. The teacher can see that. In the top left, I mean, in the top right, the teacher can start a chat with the student that might say, "I noticed you're on Minecraft. Would you mind joining me at CNN, whatever, Wavy TV 10?" In the bottom, it's a picture where the student can raise their hand and respond back. That is a one-way communication. It's just teacher, student. It's not student to student. But that's the way a teacher can say, "I've noticed." Teachers can shut down a website for a student if they're not in the right spot. Teachers can also push websites or places they want students to be specifically. So in the remote environment, this allows the teacher that opportunity to monitor what's happening with students. At the end of the class, the teacher will get a report that will say, "This is how many students were present in your class, and these were the websites they went to. And if there's any chat or communication, there's a record of that." So it helps with accountability for what's happening in the classroom remotely. In addition, this year, we are rolling out ClassLink. So ClassLink is replacing Clever. Some of you may have heard that term clever before. ClassLink is our single sign-on platform that allows students and staff to safely and securely access all of their digital resources with a single username and password. ClassLink improves upon Clever in that many of our students and staff are familiar with providing a streamlined, personalized point of entry. So if you notice on the screen, there's a picture of a computer, an iPad, and a phone. It looks the same on any device somebody uses. So if a student is on their parent's iPad and they log into ClassLink, their platform, it'll get them to the same place. It won't look different per platform. And as schedules are rolled out over the next couple of weeks, all of the applications will be populated that align to the student's schedule. Students and teachers, this is the launchpad. And anybody who logs into a Virginia Beach City Public School Chromebook starting next week will go directly to this launchpad. So again, it's the single sign-on, and you're at the location where all of your work and resources will be. There's no additional clicks. If you notice in this example, there's a textbook folder. Any textbook that's specific to that student, so a student who's taking Algebra II Trig, AP Human, and something else in a four-by-four, their textbooks would appear in that textbook folder. The Securely Classroom is right on the launch page for them. And we can also have teachers put Schoology right on that launch page. And so again, less for students to have to click through. In the bottom, if you'll notice, there's two buttons. One of those icons is a backpack. What the backpack does, it takes you right for the student. They can go right to their courses. So those are all the courses a student has. And as you can see, all of the applications that align to that are in the same backpack. So a student doesn't have to go to more than one place to find Brain Pop or Red Bird or iExcel. It's all in that backpack for the students. Thank you so much for that opportunity. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Din.
Thank you, Dr. Schubridge.
Good afternoon, everyone. So for the benefit of the viewing public, my name is David Din. I am the Chief Information Officer for Virginia Beach Schools. I'll be presenting on several strategic technology investments that we've made to expand the division's capabilities for virtual and face-to-face instruction in the year ahead. Almost all of the investments that I will cover are the result of funding received through the CARES Act. First, we're investing in 295 additional interactive panels for classrooms replacing the older projector-style boards. If you have visited a classroom with one of these panels prior to the shutdown, I'm sure you've seen how popular these are with teachers and students. With much brighter picture quality and better sound, these new panels allow for instruction without having to turn the lights off in the classroom. These panels will be prioritized for secondary and unique instructional environments, such as some foreign languages. For those of you who may be asking yourselves or wondering, why are we investing in technology for the classroom when all of our students may be at home? The answer is that it's very useful in all instructional scenarios. In many situations, teachers may be coming into school buildings to teach from their classrooms. The large panel screen facilitates virtual instruction while the teacher has access to all of the resources available in their classrooms. If we are in a hybrid instructional environment, remote students will be able to collaborate with students and instruction while in the classroom. The return of this investment will continue when we're once again in face-to-face scenarios. We're also investing in technology to bring Wi-Fi access to outdoor learning areas in all schools so that when the weather permits, teachers can take students to an outdoor learning environment allowing for more social distancing and better airflow. This investment will also allow for further outdoor instruction opportunities after COVID. We are completing the purchase of a division-wide Zoom license so that all teachers will have access to this popular tool without restrictions. A full license removes the 40-minute restriction, increases the number of users who can be connected at the same time, and allows teachers to record their classes for later viewing by students to support asynchronous instruction. Through a partnership with Microsoft and Citrix, two of the biggest names in technology, we are implementing some tech magic, which gives students unlimited access to all of the special software, which is typically only available in school computer labs. This software supports specialized business and technology programs offered through the Advanced Technology Center. New larger-screen laptops, ideal for virtual instruction for teachers, and iPads for pre-kindergartners have also been ordered. Elementary school TSTs have been working diligently to distribute the iPads. Pre-K students will be ready to go with their devices by the beginning of school. However, suppliers tell us that due to high demand, teacher laptops are backordered. We expect to receive them in October and have them distributed to teachers in November. In the meantime, teachers will continue to use their Chromebooks. As a quick note, funding for the pre-K iPads was provided through Title I, not through the CARES Act funds, as I said earlier. Finally, as I mentioned in our last workshop, to make sure that we're able to provide support of all technology in our division when families and teachers need it, the Department of Technology will be providing expanded hours for phone support and device exchanges, Monday through Thursday from 7:30 until 6:30 PM, Friday, 7:30 until 4:30 PM. Our goal is to make sure that we're able to provide the best services and support possible for our students, families, teachers, and staff when they need it most. And with that, I'll hand it back to Dr. Bergen.
Thank you, Mr. Din.
Thank you, David. So, board members, now I'd like to just share with you briefly some of the work that's been occurring over the past several months on developing more childcare options for parents. Dr. Alexander, our Director for Community Engagement, Mr. Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer, and Sharon Lewis, our Executive Director for Elementary School Administration, have been part of a joint city and schools task force that's been meeting over the past several months that included a number of stakeholders, including Parks and Rec, the Hampton Road Chamber, the United Way, Head Start, the Interfaith Alliance, and military representatives to leverage relationships and resources in order to provide greater assistance to families within the VBCPS community. And the work of the task force has led, amongst other things, to the creation of what we are calling a Safe Learning Centers program. The purpose of the Safe Learning Center program is to ensure student safety for children who would otherwise be home alone during the school day, during the virtual school day. The planning principles for the program are to provide options for childcare during virtual learning time periods for children of VBCPS teachers, as well as essential employees of the city, including first responders. Priority will also then be given to low-income students. Other planning principles include to identify physical locations, which will act as safe spaces where students can be supervised by adults to receive support during their virtual learning assignments, to follow stringent health and safety measures in the prevention of COVID-19 consistent with all local and state guidelines, and finally, to provide opportunities for healthy growth and development, including academic support, mentoring, enrichment, meals, and recreational activities. The Safe Learning Centers will operate in most of our elementary schools. And most importantly, there will be no cost for VBCPS parents to enroll their children unless they are enrolling their child in one of the sites that will be operated by Parks and Recreation, which will be a fee of $80 per week. And that cost is to offset the expense. And that cost is to offset the expense of Parks and Recreation for staffing and extended day. The hours of operation for the Safe Learning Centers will closely match a regular school day, beginning at 8:00 a.m. and concluding at 3:00 p.m. However, that extended day for the Parks and Rec site will allow for parent drop-off as early as 6:30 in the morning and pickup as late as 6:00 p.m. Between 8:00 and 3:00, students will be monitored during the day by VBCPS employees, who otherwise do not have a work assignment during periods of virtual instruction. So these employees might include bus drivers, bus assistants, as well as individuals who serve in a role of assistant in the schools, such as general assistant, PE assistant, and library media assistant. Each of the school sites will include just a small number of children, relatively speaking. Where we would normally have anywhere from five to eight or 900 children in the building, there will only be 36 to 72 children in each of these sites. It will be split into classrooms of no more than 12 students per classroom, being monitored by two adults in each of those classrooms for an adult-to-student ratio of six to one between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00. In addition to the development of the Safe Learning Centers, the Childcare Task Force has also created an interactive childcare locator map, which will be going live on our VBCPS website. Members of the task force, and Dr. Alexander in particular, are having ongoing conversations with the local faith community and area churches to see how they can also help support our families and students during periods of virtual instruction. And if there is anyone else viewing this presentation in the community who has ideas on how they can lend a hand towards these childcare efforts, please contact our Office of Community Engagement. Bringing this presentation to a close, I'd just like to remind the board and the community that the fourth-of-five-part series on VB Safe Together is this Thursday, the 27th. It will be led by Mr. Freeman, being safe in the physical environment in our classrooms. And so much of the information that Mr. Freeman was sharing with the board earlier today will be shared again with parents in the community this Thursday. And then we will conclude with the last VB Safe Together with Dr. Spence hosting on September 3rd. So appreciate your patience as we've presented this information to you. All of our chief officers are in the room or in the building and stand ready to address your questions. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bergen. All right, okay, we'll go ahead with Mrs. Melnick.
Dr. Schubridge. You mentioned a Schoolology 101.
Schoology 101, yes.
I'm sorry, Schoology, I always say that wrong. It's okay. That's available for parents? Because we did hear from a lot of parents that that was quite difficult for them. So it'll teach them about the green folders and then the subfolders and anything that exists on that, so.
So Schoology put together some pretty good training materials, but they don't completely align to Virginia Beach. So we're in the process of snipping out the parts that aren't Virginia Beach and making sure that the pieces that are there for parents are available.
Okay.
Dr. Alexander asked me to come to a Parent Connection presentation on Monday, August 31st, to talk about Schoology. And so I'm going to do sort of a 30-minute overview at that time and also share where the three tutorial videos will be housed. We're trying to get them on each school's website for quicker access for parents.
Thank you. That was beautiful. The technology piece to this whole thing is so impressive. I wanted to give you a standing ovation when you were done because this is, what's happening is absolutely, really, truly amazing. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before we go on? Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
Just stay right there.
All right.
The difference between CSOW and Schoology, because is there a possi... I was of the understanding that CSOW was pretty much designed for K through 2.
Mm-hmm, it is.
Okay, so is there a possibility that a principal would tell their staff, K through 5, that everyone is to use CSOW and not use Schoology? Is that a possibility?
It's not a preference, but it's a possibility. So I'll give you an example. When I was the principal at Kingston Elementary School, we had CSOW K-5. And the reason we had CSOW K-5 was for consistent communication. So if I'm a parent, I had parents that would have had a kindergartner, a third grader, and a fifth grader. And we were communicating with the kindergartner in CSOW. We were communicating with the parent in third grade through a different program and in fifth grade through something else. And CSOW became our consistent communication platform. So students could share work, parents could see information. So we were trying to look for that consistent communication tool. What we have shared with teachers, we've shared with ITSSs, I've talked with principals, Schoology is our learning management platform. That's what connects to the gradebook. That's where parents can see assignments. That's where the curriculum lives. That's how we deliver curriculum. What's hard for kindergarten and first-grade students is navigating to that, where CSOW has an easier platform. So we're talking with teachers about linking their Schoology work into CSOW for students to be able to engage with, to create the work, to submit, that goes then back to Schoology. So it's really, the purpose of it was the communication, the way for parents to be able to see immediately what their students were doing, to be able to give feedback immediately to their child, but that the curriculum and the resources still live in Schoology.
So it just sounds very complicated. I don't understand if we're saying that Schoology is our main source of, so that teachers use that throughout. Then I don't understand why we would allow that. I mean, why wouldn't we just say K through 2 is going to use CSOW and 3 through 5 is going to use Schoology? I mean, I don't get it. I don't get why, why we can't have parents adapt to that.
Right. So I understand that. I think the schools that wanted to use 3 through 5, it kept a consistent communication. So when I started at Kingston, I had teachers that did a lot of class dojo, and that's how they communicated with parents. If there's too many platforms for a parent to juggle, while it might seem like that's complicated, it was much more streamlined because parents knew there was one CSOW. That's where I got my communication. And my child went to Schoology in grades 3 through 5 for their resource material. It's new. For some schools, for some schools, they've been doing it. A lot of teachers had the free version, and now we're just providing them with all of the additional tools and resources within side of CSOW. There is going to be training. We have turnkey training that we have provided for instructional technology specialists. We've provided it for administrators. So we did training for administrators. And ITSSs have that training that they're going to do with their staff when they return this week.
So I was just going to ask you, does it make it more difficult for the teacher to have to use CSOW and then transfer everything over to Schoology, you know, for grades, et cetera? It sounds really complicated, maybe because I've never used it, but.
Right, I understand. You know, I'm coming from a school where we had it K-5, and the teachers used it K-5. Now, by the time you got to fourth and fifth grade, they weren't using it as much for the student work part as much as they were using it for the parent communication part and being able to take a picture of a student work, having the child read, you know, read a paragraph or read a passage and being able to share that with a parent to say, this is when we were talking in the parent-teacher conference about your student's ability to read fluently. This is a great example of that. It just gave us that opportunity to be able to share student work much more seamlessly in real time.
Right, so would you encourage, especially in the fifth grade, for example, those kids, you know, they're not going to have it in sixth grade at all. They're going to only have Schoology in sixth grade. So would you pretty much encourage the fifth-grade teachers to venture toward that more, at least starting in January?
Well, we encourage students in second grade through fifth grade to be using Schoology as their learning management platform. And I understand what you're saying, and it's hard to explain, but there's a difference in the purpose of the tool. So the teachers have the students log into Schoology, pull down their assignments, do their work and post it back. The CSOW piece is for them to be able to share with their parents the work that they've done.
I see.
So by second grade, third grade, fourth grade, they're already in Schoology, using Schoology as their instructional piece. The CSOW is the communication piece, is the way, instead of worksheets going home or the Thursday folder or some of those pieces, CSOW was becoming that tool.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have Mrs. Haltz and then Mr. Edwards.
Excuse me for just one moment. Ms. Weems wanted to let everyone know that she is online now.
Thank you.
She just.
I have noted that.
Mrs. Haltz.
Yes.
Mrs. Haltz.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't hear that. It's a related question, and you answered part of it about Schoology. But I've had many questions about questioning whether we have the technology infrastructure for Zoom, Schoology, and Google to support the platform simultaneously. Because a lot of parents have called me and said that there are a lot of outages with Zoom. And I wondered if that was our problem or is that another problem that we can't control?
I see Mr. Din moving, and I'm really thinking I want him to take it. But I understand your question, so I'm going to let you take it.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Haltz. As many of you may have noticed yesterday, Zoom had some difficulties, right? We don't have a definitive answer from Zoom yet, but the speculation is that all of that happened because of all the schools who started their school week yesterday, hitting Zoom all at once. And so that certainly leads us to believe that Zoom underestimated the amount of bandwidth that they would need in order to facilitate connections between all these schools around the country. What we've done in order to make sure that that type of situation doesn't happen to us is we are actually, and Dr. Schubridge can speak to this if she would like to provide more details, but we're actually providing training for our teachers in three different platforms. So one is Zoom, secondly, in Google Meet as well, and then, thirdly, we are also providing training with the Schoology Big Blue Button conferencing system as well. So we have great resiliency in our environment here in case we have issues like that. Does that answer your question?
Well, sort of. So, all right, except that I keep getting parents telling me it's still, they still have outages, you know? And I guess that's going to improve in this coming semester?
I am sure that as companies in general understand the amount of capacity that they need to have in order to accommodate so many schools that are using their platforms, that it will absolutely improve, yes.
And the parents are aware of what they should do or who they should call if they continue to have problems like that?
So we always provide parents the option to certainly call and talk to resources that are available in the school, right? So there's teachers, there's ITSSs, there's TSTs. And then certainly, they can call the technology help desk, and we'll certainly help them as well.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. May I just add one thing to that? I did want to also let you know that a benefit of ClassLink is that if we have an outage, so let's say Ms. Haltz, we find out on Monday morning that Zoom is down, ClassLink, we can put out a blast message so that when the people log in, there's a message right there that says, "Attention, parents, Zoom is down. Please be patient with us, we'll get..." So that way, a parent doesn't get frustrated that they're trying to get in and they can't. So that's another benefit of having ClassLink this coming year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, please add Ms. Owens to the queue. She does have her hand raised via Zoom.
Okay, Mr. Edwards, and then Mrs. Hughes.
I saw Mr. Mira out there, if he's... I've got a... Welcome, Mr. Mira. Couple, just a general update on, you know, we're okay as far as, you know,
Staffing?
Hires and staffing, and a specific question regarding substitutes. You know, I've heard concerns about substitutes. And my prediction was substitutes would be more available now than they were in January and February, based on the economy. But only if we have been able to recruit and fill ranks from people that were gainfully employed, who are qualified to teach and might want to be substituted. Have we done any of that?
Yes, sir. And staffing is going as well as could be expected. We actually looked comparing to where we were last year, and we're in as good a shape as we were at this time last year. I looked in particular because, and I'm going to share a little bit, we had a couple of late resignations, and I started becoming alarmed. But then when I looked at the data, actually, we are actually in better shape. We had more resignations last year later than we do right now. And that might be due to the economy along the lines of what you're saying. The number of teaching substitutes in the system right now is 1,881. That's a pretty good number. We have a memo going out in the principal packet. We just finished working on it tonight, actually, informing the principals of some pieces out there of how they secure them. They're still working through some of the pieces about virtual instruction with them and their training, but that's all coming as it should be.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
Yes, in the email that was sent out, or the press release that we got, it was stated that Virginia Beach school teachers and city employees would have priority in the Safe Learning Centers. And then when Dr. Bergen was up tonight, he said low-income students will have priority, which is correct?
All of those are correct. We will begin by filling our slots that are not the Parks and Rec slots with our teaching staff as the first priority. And then, following that, we'll be looking at low-income. And then if you look at the Parks and Rec slots, they're advertising to a broader community who are interested in paying for childcare slots. And essential workers are a part of what they've allocated their space for.
So it'll be teaching staff first, and then low-income students are the second-tier priority?
That's correct.
Okay. And my other question was, I had bus drivers reach out to me because they received a job description that included working with this. And three of the things that were in there were teaching, tech support, and helping students in the restroom. The concern, well, tech support, I mean, if it's just helping a child log in, that's probably not a big deal. I could help a child log in. Anything else I call tech support for, I need, it kind of is above my pay grade. They're concerned about having to help children in the restroom because of personal liability. And there's also a concern about teaching. One of the teachers said, "Well, I'm not really qualified to teach." And I thought, okay, well, a lot of subs, and in fact, I've subbed too. I'm not a qualified teacher. So it begs the question, are they going to have to teach to the level that a qualified teacher were? And if it's yes, that's concerning for them. If it's no, and it's, you know, what's going to be given to these students is at the level that you would give a substitute, that's going to be a problem for continuing education because that's not the robust virtual learning that we've been talking about.
So the answer first to the teaching is no, they're not expected to teach. These learning centers are anticipated to be used for students who need to be engaged in the virtual learning with their teacher. And so they're there, and this person's job is to make sure that they are engaged in the virtual learning with their assigned teacher and that they're doing the assignments that have been assigned for the day and that they're following the schedule for the day. So they're not expected to be the teacher. They're expected to make sure the student's engaged with the virtual teacher and the virtual classroom. Relative to the tech support, you're right. Basically, it's making sure they can get on to the virtual sessions. And if there's an issue, that they contact the tech support within the school to provide that support. So they're not expected to be the ITSS or the technical support. They're expected to know how to get in touch with those folks so that they can come down and help the child. And then to the liabilities around using the restroom, it would be, as you noted, with any other substitutes that we have, where during the day, you take children to the restroom for breaks. And that's something that we would expect them to do here as well. And I would certainly encourage those bus drivers who have that concern to reach out and talk to their supervisor. I'd be surprised if there was any less liability relative to that work than driving them on a bus. So I think it's something that we can clear up with them, with their supervisors.
Anything else, Mrs. Hughes, right now? Okay. Okay, we have Ms. Owens and then Mrs. Riggs.
Sure.
So we're ready for Ms. Owens.
Thank you.
Hello.
I have a couple of questions, and so if I need to ask a few and then go back.
I have a couple questions, and so if I need to ask a few and then go back in queue, that's fine. In regards to the substitute teachers, has there been any email or contact with them to assess their willingness to substitute, given the situation, as we have, you know, polled our regular staff and realized that some of them are not in a position to be face-to-face for us to have an accurate look at what our substitute poll looks like?
There has been a specific email going out. There has been communications. The number I read earlier, 1,881, I think I said, that's how many are active right now. Substitutes communicate with our HR crew that work with substitutes to have their names removed throughout the whole summer. So at this point, I don't believe...there were communications posted on the subsystem, talking to them about their pay. There's FAQs. They are copied on every communication that goes out to all employees. And I...but specifically asking them if they're willing to come in, no, we have not specifically asked them that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell me about...you said that we're kind of on pace for filling our vacancies. Can you tell me how many vacancies we have?
Yes, I can tell you. I checked today, and that's a number, I'm telling you, a division this size, and I'm going to tell you, teachers, right now, okay? That number changes. So the number I'm going to give you is approximately, it was just under 50 this morning. That sounds like a lot. It's not a lot. It does not mean there's 50 classrooms that are not going to be covered. There are what we call holdbacks. I bet, not I bet, I believe about half of those positions, or close to half, are holdbacks, that school administration holds back to see where they need to, in September or October, place additional teachers. The other thing is, we, at a division this size, we get people, and it's not specifically linked to COVID, we get people resigning and leaving all the time. People get orders, they move away, they get jobs. So we're actually, knock on wood, I believe we're in better shape this time this year than we were last year, actually. And earlier, I said, the resignations and terminations are actually less this year than they were last year for the last three months. Does that answer your question?
It does. For the teaching, I saw on our site that we have, I don't know, when I scrolled, maybe 15 to 20 custodial vacancies, and I'm curious how that plays into it, particularly with the need for the extra cleaning right now.
Larry, Ames is out here, but we have custodial substitutes also. But custodial is an area that we have been having difficulty maintaining and continuing to keep people. Larry, I don't know if you want to mention anything else, or that pretty much is it? He's letting me up here, okay.
But I think to the point, Mr. Mira, is that out of the ordinary?
No, it's not out of the ordinary. It's, I mean, we are constantly hiring custodial folks, bus drivers, and we fill those with substitutes, you know, when we don't have full-time people to take those positions. Constantly recruiting and hiring.
Are we good right now?
Are we good right now, Ms. Owens?
I can, yep, I can go back in the queue, though, because I have a couple other questions, but I'll allow my colleagues to have a chance.
Certainly, thank you.
It's Riggs.
Well, thank you.
Is there a way to poll the sub?
We...
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a way to poll the sub poll?
Actually, my, our recruitment and retention specialist has been working with the magician, Mr. David Din, on helping the substitutes, because we're heading into this virtual climate. I know just enough maybe to be dangerous here, David, but there's a, they are working on a more succinct way for the substitutes to gain access to the technology that they need for teaching in this virtual climate. We do email them, but not all of them check email. So, I mean...
So we don't know how many are coming back, but, you know, haven't indicated...
We do know that there's 1,881 that are still active.
Right, okay.
And that means they have not dropped off. That number, you know, is active right as of today.
Okay, because I'm concerned, because there's going to probably be a need for more subs because of the symptom screening.
Is there a question, or?
Well, I mean, won't there be a need for more?
There may be. I don't know that. I don't know how many we're going to need. The fact that teachers are able to teach virtually, maybe there won't be as much of a need. The teachers could stay home and teach virtually, at least for the first opening couple of weeks. We are doing everything we can to continue to hire substitutes. I mean, I don't know what else to say in that regard. We recruit actively.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Okay. This is for Ms. Shubridge. The programs that we have now, you know, you've upgraded, how is this different from the spring? Can you give us specific how the upgrades and all that you've done is different than what we did in the spring? Specifically, give us that.
Okay, so, specific...I don't know if you can hear me. This is weird. So with ClassLink, we have the single sign-on. It goes to one location. So in the spring, what was happening for parents is there was frustration because I got to here, then I had to go to Clever, then I had to search through Clever to find my child's application. By the time I got to the application, it was a different login. Then how did I get...okay, so parents were getting frustrated. They couldn't get to where they needed to go. So the benefit of ClassLink is a single sign-on. It'll get students right to the platform, to the page where they jump off, okay? That didn't sound good. Were they...okay, all right. Because I'm thinking about jumping off some days, and so that's a different story. So that's one benefit. The classroom management piece, the securely piece, that's now consistent K-12. There were some schools in the spring that had a product called Go Guardian, which was very similar. But now being able to have that K-12, teachers can monitor the engagement of what students are doing at home. We didn't really have that capability in the spring. So now we can do a better job of monitoring. We can push websites. We can push specific locations. We can turn off or block during a class period places we don't want students to go. So that will give us the teachers a better handle on what's happening. We talk about engagement and monitoring students. This is going to be a great tool for us to be able to monitor engagement, to see what students are doing. So those two specifically. With Seesaw, it was just a way for us to have a communication tool, and for our youngest learners to be able to share what they're doing with their teachers. We're trying to think about those learning experiences where the kids are actually creating, and not just filling in a worksheet or doing something very benign, bland.
So where they can take actual ownership of their learning?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So a task can be given, the kids can go and do that task, upload their task to Seesaw. And for the younger students, that's an easier tool to use than it is to get through Schoollege. Click, it's there, it's loaded, they're ready to go. Where Schoollege, there's a few more steps. And so again, for the younger learners, trying to make that an easier way for them to engage with their learning, to share their creativity.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have Mrs. Manning, then Mrs. Melnick.
Okay, I have three, and two of them should be really quick. I think it's probably all going to be for Dr. Robertson. The first one, Dr. Robertson, is regarding the calendar. Just a question about, I know Mondays are professional learning, and it says, "While schools are operating in a remote environment, Mondays will be used for professional learning." So, I mean, some of our kids could be operating in a remote environment for a long time. I'm just trying to...so if all elementary schools go back to where they have the option of in-person learning, would they be going back five days, or are we still going to be on four-day week?
So a couple of things to answer that part of the question. Students will be learning five days a week. There'll be the opportunity for face-to-face. When we do go back, we'll be four days a week. The Monday is asynchronous learning. When we get to the stage where all the students are going back, that's going to be a five-day week. That'll be Monday through Friday in school.
Starting when? Not until we're all in green-green.
Not until we're green-green.
So we'll probably have a four-day instructional week. I mean, they're not going to be provided instruction on Monday?
No, there'll be synchronous lessons, or asynchronous lessons provided to them to do on Monday, and teachers will have office hours. So there will be opportunities to engage with the teacher on Monday.
So students will be able to access their teachers on Monday?
Yes, via office hours.
Okay, thank you.
Which part?
So are you saying, are you saying that...I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
Because I am so confused about this right now. Are you saying that when we go back in yellow, the elementary students will be there, and they would only be four days a week at that point?
Yes.
Okay. I just needed that clarified. Thank you.
Okay. That's okay. My second question is, thank you for your response regarding SATs. I still have some questions, and I'm getting a lot of phone calls. So, and I know that this, part of this is a college board issue, but I feel like we need to communicate with them. When I went on to reschedule my kids' SATs, it is still showing September 26, Princess Anne High School is one of their testing sites. I have scheduled, refunded, scheduled, refunded. College Board's not communicating with me as a parent, and I know I'm not the only one, because I'm getting a lot of phone calls about it. So, but it's my understanding we are not having any in-person SATs in Virginia Beach until October 2nd, per your message, correct?
So, Dr. Rogers, was that, the first date was October 3rd that we would be hosting?
It was October. I remember it wasn't till October.
SATs, yeah, October, November, and December, and then a team met, because that's a significant challenge, we want to meet for kids. And we decided to talk with College Board about a onsite SAT administration during the...so we're looking for a fourth opportunity to do it onsite for our Virginia Beach students, not counting the October 3rd, November, and December.
Will it be before October?
We can find out.
Okay, so currently, I can go on to College Board and sign up for September 26 at Princess Anne High School.
So I believe the first one we're offering is October 3rd.
Okay, and that's what you had communicated with me, so I didn't sign up for it, but I'm sure that there are a lot of other parents who have, and it's been very frustrating.
Okay, we'll get clarification on that.
Okay, and if we could get another date, I mean, it would be very helpful for our seniors.
We definitely have another date, and I believe it's in October for the seniors.
Okay, great. And then my last question, and, you know, I don't know if you're going to be able to answer all this right now, because we've gotten so many emails about the IB program. And, you know, I'm not an expert in the IB world, so I'm just kind of relaying questions that we've been receiving. And one of the main themes seems to be that students have two-year-long courses, and they still have to finish the coursework from last semester that they didn't complete. They have to finish that, along with switching to a four-by-four schedule. They have to do their IA, and there's going to be long gaps in between some of their courses that are supposed to be building on one another. So we've heard from a lot of different parents and students. Do you have some solutions for them?
So, may I ask Dr. Rogers, but I do know that, for example, Princess Anne High School, Ms. Cox has, I believe, had put out a questionnaire to her families that closed today. She's having two Zoom meetings on Thursday to answer many of those questions. Dr. Rogers and his team with Mr. Delaney have had multiple conversations with College Board to get some clarity around some of those challenges, and so I'm going to...
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for asking that question. Mr. Delaney, if you're on to us, I know you had a recent meeting, but absolutely, the team has worked very closely with the schools that have the IB programs to begin to generate plans to support students, both in the first term and the second term, that will take place certainly during the school day and beyond the school day in the afternoons, and potentially before. So they certainly recognize that there are courses associated with being able to face those challenges. Now, the communication that came from the IBO, International Bachelor Organization, they recognize that we are certainly not the only school division that has chosen to use the four-by-four. DC Public Schools is another local school division that's facing similar issues and challenges, but they are certainly working with us to resolve some of the issues that we face as a result of the four-by-four schedule. So, Mr. Delaney, did you want to add to anything? Are you able?
Yeah, I'm here, Dr. Rogers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, everyone. Pleasure to be here. We did meet, Mr. Keever and I met with Ms. Cox at Princess Anne, and Mr. Little, as well as GRC with Ms. Patricio. Also in that meeting was Ms. Lane, who is the IBO representative for this area, and was providing a lot of clarity around their desire to ensure they're going to work with us to assist our students in the best ways possible. Some examples already is that they're, we're looking at how do we compact the curriculum so it only reflects the assessments that will be given in the May 2021 testing window. We combined a couple of semester courses into the four-by-four schedule, so that they can take those entire courses in one term rather than having to split in the semesters. The PLCs, the professional learning communities at those schools are modifying their pacing and unit assessments and development based on the IB revisions. The IB organization is revising some things as well. They are looking at how can they condense down some of their assessments. For example, in one literature courses, they've removed Paper 2. They're making other adjustments in math courses, although they're not going to remove components for those courses that are new offerings because they want the benchmarks for scoring. However, they won't let the scores be a detriment to student grading. I think it's important, if you receive calls from the parents in the next day or so, that they are contacting Ms. Cox, because they have a pretty robust agenda to address many of the concerns that are being brought forward. They've put a lot of supports in place, utilizing those Mondays, that I heard the question asked earlier, how they can create supports on those Mondays with those internal assessments. The IB organization also provided, along with suggestions from the schools, some alternate ways of looking at how to do those internal assessments. So I guess my point is, there's a lot of flexibility. We understand the challenge of the four-by-four, and we believe that the schools are trying to really develop programs that can support students, especially as they move into that spring term.
Okay, one parent has asked is, and I think this is about the second term, regarding 44 days is not enough time for a teacher to teach a course, and students learn and apply and demonstrate the knowledge in an internal assessment that counts 20% to 25% of the exam score. And I've heard that several times.
What they're working on is that they're going to try to embed many of those things into the first term as well. That speaks to what I just talked about in terms of those Mondays to add additional time. If you look at the first term in of itself, there's 17 of those Mondays. They are also looking at potential if a student has an open block, where they're not taking four classes in a term to create support sessions there during those open blocks to address those needs. And as I also stated, and Ms. Cox can provide more details, they're looking at the types of adjustments they can make to those internal assessments, as well to allow them to kind of take full advantage of that first term. Certainly understand the parents' concern. It's a legitimate concern in terms of those time constraints, but I believe the schools are working hard to ensure they're supporting students with the time that can exist in the first term. But Mrs. Cox and her team are working, and teachers are working hard to ensure how that can work with the existing staff, how they can adjust curriculum and ensure that those students are prepared for it to the best of those abilities, understanding the restraints that are in place.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, yes, thank you. And these emails have come to the full board, and the administration did put out something for us as well, and it's good to know that this will be very shortly communicated to families. Dear woman, Ryan, can you please add Ms. Williams to the queue?
Sure, she can go first.
Go ahead, Mrs. Williams. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Weems, please unmute, we cannot hear you. We can go ahead and then.
Back, let us know, okay. Mrs. Melnig?
Before I ask my question, I just wanted to applaud Dr. Shubridge for her honesty. Thank you for that. And I think it's important that the public knows that this is not just frustrating for parents and students, but for everyone who is making this happen. And I think it's important that we recognize that and I thank you for that because the millions of possible questions you guys have answers for and, and I know this is huge and so thank you. And I really think it's important that people heard you say that, so, thank you. But my question is, any of you, Dr. Spitz, any, Mr. Freeman, children who have a mask waiver? This is a question from teachers, will those students be required to stay six feet away from other kids or how will that be handled?
So, the first answer is that as we work with them, there'll be, you know, there'll be a form. I know that we've gotten some recent guidance from some of the local pediatric practices on that form and what that needs to look like and what students need to have in place in order to have a mask waiver. If they do have a mask waiver, the first thing we'll try to do is offer an accommodation of virtual learning. If we can't work through that, then we'll offer an accommodation of a face shield. If we can't work through that, then we'll have to put them in a six-foot social distancing sort of box that will keep them away from their peers.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chan, I just wanted to alert you to the time if you want to.
Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Owens, we'll try to wrap up in the next five minutes for our break. And then this will be, we will have an abbreviated presentation during the formal meeting, at which time we can continue our questions unless you're, unless you just want to all break now.
So, so my, my question is just real, real quick. Dr. Bergen, I'm not sure, maybe you, you might be the one to answer this, but I'm not sure. It has to do with how we got bus drivers, did you ask them to be able to do this babysitting service, this, the teacher assistance? How was that, I mean, we didn't just, we didn't just voluntold people. Could you clarify that for the public so that they won't think that we just told bus drivers they have to do this? How did we go about getting them to volunteer or, they're not really volunteering, they're being paid, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and we had all the supervisors contact them by phone personally to give them the, we were, we were provided a way of informing them that this is what we're going to be asking you to do. You know, with you not being, having to drive your bus, if you're contracted for five hours a day, you may be called on to work as a monitor in a classroom for five hours a day until such time as we go back to driving these kids to and from school and then that would cease and desist.
Could they, could they say no? I, I really don't feel comfortable doing that. I mean, are we paying them extra also for this?
No, they'll be paid their same salary and can they say no? Yes, they can say no, but then they would be using their leave time or whatever to, to do that.
Okay. I, I, I've had several phone calls about it and some bus drivers were kind of upset over the fact that this is not part of their real job description, so.
Yeah, and I, I've responded to several bus drivers myself. It's not a, it's not one of those kinds of things that we single bus drivers out to do this. We're asking a lot of the employees who cannot perform their regularly scheduled contracted duties to continue to be paid. I think the school board has been very generous since March the 15th to paying the bus drivers and the bus assistants, but how long can we continue to do that without the public coming back to say, what are they going to be doing? And we're not unique. I had a Region Two Directors meeting today and that was one of our discussions. What are the alternative duties that you're making available? Because, you know, many of the school divisions are virtual for the next nine weeks. And so they've got to come up with duties for their employees for nine weeks. We're not at that point, but in any event, most of the ones, when I explained it to them, they said, you know, you're right, you're certainly right. They have been very generous to us and this is our time of need. This is, this is out of the ordinary. So, hopefully that they'll step up and provide the assistance we need.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And before we convene for, or stop for now, I just want to ask Ms. Owens, do you want to sneak in a quick one now, Ms. Owens, or wait until the formal meeting?
I don't mind waiting for the formal meeting. It's probably not going to be a quick one, so the formal meeting is fine.
She's available, yeah.
Ms. Weems?
Yes, I just wanted to ask how we are going to ensure parents that their elementary children are still going to be able to have paper-to-pencil tasks and be able to balance that with all the, you know, computer work that they're going to be doing.
Hello, Mrs. Weems, the direction that we, hi. The direction that we're providing our schools is to certainly work very closely with our families and should the need arise for students to have paper pencil tasks, of course, we are in a virtual environment, we're certainly encouraging the use of all of the digital resources that we have available to our students, but we also are training our teachers to have a balance of digital and both non-digital resources. We are in communication with many of our team members about, to provide other opportunities and resources for our families and we're working out the logistics and making sure that we can get those materials to those families. But of course, if there are instances where families would prefer paper pencil, that they should certainly make that communication with the school buildings. We will not, not make that available should a family have that need. Of course, we are also encouraging the plans that we are planning for, but we will certainly make that available for families who request it.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks. I'm just, yeah, for those cases too, but I'm just talking about, you know, I mean, all of our students, if they haven't had a written assignment since March 13th and then, you know, you're talking now five, six, seven, eight months and I just can only see those writing skills, especially at the very early level, to, you know, regress, obviously. So I would hope that we would do a balance of that for all students. But I'm not sure how that's going to go.
Sure, those opportunities will be afforded to students through the synchronous learning opportunities. So for example, in small group instruction where students have an opportunity to interact with their teachers from one to, er, racial, potentially one to five, some of the activities that teachers will be providing, students will require them to do writing and to do reading that involves print text and certainly, they will have multiple opportunities to do that throughout the day and not just sitting in front of a screen.
Thank you both, we do have.
Thank you.
Being at 6 o'clock for the formal meeting.